We're interested in offering opportunities to all the young adults in the area from ages of sixteen and a half to twenty-four years of age for a vocational scholarship up to thirty thousand dollars a year. If you know what you want to do, if you want to be a young professional, if you want the opportunity because you know you're hungry, you're on the porch getting clean, staying clean, being mentally strong and planning ahead, I'm willing to invest up to thirty thousand dollars on you each year for two years. I want to fund a best investment. I might ask for an I D R B A. All that we will ask is that you become a serious taxpaying citizen and move into management so that we can invest that taxpaying dollars back into the next generation of young adults. Are you ready to have your own house? Are you ready to have your own car? Are you willing to go to the finance app? The military, management training, college, we're directly connected with Gadsden State University, the Gadsden Job Corps students, the Gadsden State Department of Valley Street. We also have a higher level of scholarship through Job Corps where our students go directly into Carnival Cruise Line, Norwegian Cruise Line, CSX Roma, H Street Chef School. All pay through Job Corps and another level of really fifty thousand dollar scholarship. All students don't get that opportunity only at our best. So if you don't want to be average, if you want to be exceptional, please get the Gadsden Job Corps opportunity. Thank you.
That concludes my presentation. If you know anyone in the community that is near the poverty line or that is underemployed youth, please send them our way. I have six trades on my center. Frank has another seven, eight trades in his center. And of course, we can send students out of the state to Georgia or Tennessee or Kentucky for one of sixty-one different vocational training programs. We will get their tape scores high. We'll get them a driver's license, we will residential living, they get a stipend, and we'll help change their lives. A Job Corps scholarship changed my life, and I'm here to try to help you and your community change the lives of your young adults. Thank you.
And then you say that you will, the bus will pick the students up?
We'll, right. We have a few. I think we have ten students from the Anderson area already. A few of them have graduated, but it's so close that if we get a bigger population of thirty, forty, I have a bus, we'll pick them up daily. Right now, what we do is we drop them off every Friday around three, four, so they can maintain their employment and they can be in class residential Monday through Friday. We can do a non-res situation where we can come back and point every day. But what we've come to find out is the students who do best in Job Corps are the ones that home environment is not the most secure, and that's good to get them off the campus and get those social skills, get away from the anxiety, get away from the friends, get away from the late-night video games and the influences where they're working on employability skills, the social skills, and the dorms of doing their own laundry and getting their stuff ready and getting their homework and going to bed at a decent time. Those are essential skills that these young adults don't have going into employment that we focus on with the residential living part of our scholarship. This is Mrs. Miller. She's my recruiter. She's over the area, so she will be interviewing any of the applicants before they're allowed to come to the center and tour the center and to make sure they meet eligibility and suitability standards.
Have you talked with the school system? Have you talked with the superintendent, the school board about this program and the possible school board and Councilman Jenkins, you said too about the housing authority?
Yes.
You spoke to Mr. Matt? Matt, start it.
I personally, I've been here one year, and for the first year, I really worked on program changes on the center. We've gone through a lot. This second year, I'm dedicated to be more and more the face of Job Corps in the area. But Frank has, Mrs. Miller has, but now I'm ready to talk to the community and talk to HUD Housing, talk to any community leaders regarding referrals into Job Corps.
I think it's a good program that you'll have and the opportunity that we can connect, especially they don't have us still on the campus. They just, they, they, you bring them back and forth and get about thirty, twenty to thirty people there and then you transport them back and forth.
I have flyers if anybody's interested in business cards. Currently, we have over two hundred scholarships available today. I can put two hundred students available right now.
You don't have dorms on the Valley Street campus?
Yes, we did. We have two dorms. I can house up to a hundred, excuse me.
Oh, you've got them up on the high side up there?
Those are, those college dorms are now our dorms. We can house two hundred and fifty, about two hundred and fifty students on them. We have over seventy residential living scholarships, Denver Gadsden, and another seventy-five in Montgomery, and then another thirty non-res slots in Oakdale. And I also have flyers to anybody who's interested.
Any additional questions, comments?
What can we do to help you?
Thank you very much. What could you do to help us? Two, no, two parts. Right now, our enrollment is a little low, lower than usual, but it only picks up at this time. So really getting our name out there, rebrand, and we know that Job Corps has not always had a great reputation. We know we were a diversionary program through the seventies and eighties. We know we're looking at third generation. You know, our goal is to break the cycle of poverty, and we've changed a lot, and we encourage people to come out and tour the center and see what we have to offer. As far as campus control, we have more controls than a local high school. These students earn their scholarships. They're considered federal vocational employees in training. So the opportunities for Job Corps, young adults, Job Corps, I went through a program back in eighty-eight, got my, it was a high school dropout, got my GED, got my facility maintenance certification, went through physical therapy, psych therapy certification, got that. Job Corps paid for my associate's degree. I got my bachelor's degree. Job Corps paid for my master's degree and the first year my PhD. So they don't just do it. There's hundreds of students just like me. We're really, this is our ministry. This is really what we want to do, and we see the need. And what happens now with young adults is they're shopping around to see what other services are available. We don't want to compete with the high schools, and that's the problem, they think. We don't, we don't want to go and talk to the high schools to the kid that's on the line. If, once they've been out for a year, sure. We don't want to compete with, you know, the workforce development office. We're partners. We want the students whose home environment is preventing them from being successful. Those are the ones that I want. I want them to come to me. I want to be their head coach. I want to help them get the professional skills. And then we want a partnership with employers that have high turnover, that are looking for entry-level professions. I'm getting them clean, I'm getting them in shape, I'm getting them focused, I'm getting them working on, you know, their, their, their mental health and all their, and then I need opportunities for them so they can get a chance. And I guarantee you, my graduates will be more successful than any interview process of anybody on the street.
Do you have a welding program?
We do have a welding, welding program. Frank down in Montgomery has welding. I have culinary arts, I have a CNA program, I have hotel and lodging, I have a carpentry program, then I'm switching over to basic manufacturing warehouse, and it's going to feed into a Class A, Class B program, since it's such a high demand. I have office administration, which is more like a college prep. I have a security program, Security One and Security Two, and there's actually going to be advanced training program for these students to get like Homeland Security TSA type of jobs that we're training our students. And we're seeing the age of students coming even higher, twenty-two, twenty-three years of age, with very little working experience. And it's, it's crazy. I've never seen such a situation. And, and it's not just here. I ran, I ran a Job Corps in Kentucky, I run a Job Corps in South Carolina. We see just underemployed youth, even the ones with high school. If they don't, we say, we have to say, it's not just let you know, it's who you know and how they know you. If they don't have the right social connection, they're not going to get a great job opportunity. And these students want their own house, they want their own car, they, they may have a child, but there's not really an avenue for them to do that simultaneously.
You know, my, my, I, my dad had to drop out of school to take care of his nine brothers and sisters, and he went to Job Corps. And I remember twelve and thirteen years old, reading schematics with him in the house from Skilled Senior to Job Corps. And I have an uncle that went to Job Corps, and he owns his own construction company, you know, and so.
Oh, look, can you come out? I need you to come out and talk to my students. Come out and talk to my staff. They need to hear about those success stories. They get tired of me talking about me all the time, so.
What about the young people who have made mistakes, been incarcerated?
Right.
You know, I've talked to some, and said that, you know, it's just so much easier just to stay in crime than, because nobody wants to hire some of these young people. And so do you have any?
We can work with some of them. It depends, you know, again, it depends on the level of felony and what it is. If it deals with any type of violent weapon felony, there's no way we can work with them, especially residential, because they're sleeping right next to another student, four persons to a room. We can't, you know, it's subject to that. But if it's, you know, if it's, you know, anything other than, it's kind of hard to think of a felony that would not, a weapon, but there are some. So those kind of things, we do work with students all the time. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to item three, which is the debate on a couple of nuisances. There are three groups there. They're all contain, are all on Dropbox. Any questions or comments about any of those groups? Okay. Let's move on then to item four, which is traffic signal equipment upgrade. Can you present that to us, Corey?
Yes, sir. This is a maintenance agreement for the, the traffic signal upgrades that AlDOT did at four thirty-one, an intersection of four thirty-one and Chocolat on Colton Road. They put in the early warning system and they did some changes to the lights there. So this is just one of the.
Did we have to update our, I guess, policy or whatever to reflect the changes?
No, it's not a new one. You worried about advertising?
No, no. I was going to say, we got to do that anyway. We have to be more and more.
Because I asked for two lights to be taken down already, and then I don't, they didn't make this agenda. I guess my email ain't let through. So I was going to say, since we've been in the, we had to make the change anyway. Say that all the time.
Okay, then any other discussion as to item four? Okay, item five then is an alcohol license application, which also, I believe, is in Dropbox. Any questions as to this retail beer and table wine application? Okay. Here we go. Then we will move on to item six, which is, yeah, a presentation by Bantam Strategy Group, and we have guests here for that. Corey, would you introduce our guest, please?
I'm actually going to turn that over.
Okay, Toby.
Thank you, Mayor. Shortly after you came into office, the city supported through a memorandum of understanding a local bike, bike share, what's called a bike share program for all facets of the city and the community. But over time, this has become a more of a regional collaboration. You have the cities of Jacksonville, Madison, Oxford, JSU, and Weaver are sent to, to becoming a partner of interest as well, providing an update. And also, they were the bike in. We have Lindsay and Casey that are going to provide the update to you, and I'll turn it over.
Sure. Thanks for having us. I'm Casey Rose of Faith and Strategy Group. This is Lindsay West. We began discussions about a year and a half ago about bringing bike share to these communities that Toby mentioned. So with implementation, we'll be the first regional bike share system in Alabama. If you're familiar with Birmingham and downtown Birmingham's Green Bikes, they have a docking bike share system, so the big stations that they dock in and charge, and you rent from there. That's what we originally brought to the table because that was the only available bike share system at the time. In December, we brought before the cities, and Toby was present, this Lime Bike is a dockless bike, so it does not require the docking stations. And probably the docking system, the biggest hurdle we were having to climb was money. It costs a lot of money to bring those systems to the city. This is free. This is of no cost to the city. Lime Bike comes in and will hire somebody local to operate this system. They bring the bikes in. They lock to themselves, as Lindsay just unlocked the bike and, or, yes, she locked it. She's about to unlock it. It's done through an app on the phone, so you download the Lime Bike app. It's very simple. When you pull it up, a map comes up. It shows you lines of where bikes are located. You go to the bike, you will scan the Q codes, QR codes that are on three different places on the bike. It unlocks the bike and it's ready to ride. It is a dollar per thirty minutes to ride for the user. It starts tracking on the phone and charges you for the use. All cities in Jacksonville State agree that this is probably the best option moving forward for a bike share system for this area. We have met with the other cities already, their council work sessions in the last week, and it seems real positive across the board that this will be a good fit for the region for a bike share system. What questions do you have for us?
Did you run the right thing in?
I rode it from across the street.
We've been riding it all over Anderson all day.
It came via four wheels, but I did drive it, rode it across the street. Yeah, we have some of it.
You said it's a dollar for thirty minutes.
Mm-hmm. They do offer low, so students are half price, anybody, and faculty, anybody with dock.
About JSU, would you guys be able, would they be able to use their student account with JSU to work?
So there is, you register on your app through an email address, so .edu will automatically be in fifty percent off, so @jsu.edu. There's also an option for low income, fifty percent off, so it'll be fifty cents per thirty minutes of ride.
So how would they know that? I mean, what, what, so you pay for X number of dollars and X number of time, time frame upfront?
Yeah, it charges you as you ride, but for the lower income, there's different ways that they're doing that. Lime Bikes testing that out across the country. What's the most efficient way to make sure that those people are getting access to the bikes and paying for it? Some's with, they go prepay, a scratch-off card, and so they scratch the code off to use it. Some is a pay, pay, pay near me. Pay near me, which is a prepaid card that they buy. So that would be prepaid. If they do qualify for low income, they would do it that way.
So what I'm thinking about, if you want to work, if you want to ride for two hours, at the end of two hours, you don't have the money?
It's not going to lock. You just keep going.
It's four, then it's four dollars. That case, unless it's a low-income individual or a student, then it's two dollars.
But if they prepaid it.
And they're on their prepaid, prepaid card that's accepted by Lime Bike, so it's on there.
What I'm saying is.
And they just run out of funding.
What I'm saying is, if you keep riding.
It's not going to lock.
But I mean, if you, if you don't pay for it, period, I mean, you just, so like an honor system or something like that?
Well, once he goes and locks it, I mean, it does track them.
They have GPS on these bikes, so they're taking all the data in. So once they give those codes, so he's going to, to unlock it initially, that code's going to have to go in. So they do the two-hour ride and it goes over. They're going to be able to track that ride went over. So when they come in to buy more, they're going to be like, all right, bud, you know, you're going over on your time.
Also, it will show the deduction. So if they go to access it again and they've ridden two dollars over and it's, it's going to say minus two dollars, they'd have to pay that two dollars before they could use the system again. So if that answers your question. Also, there's monthly and there's annual passes that people can buy. So you can buy it one time ride, you can buy it monthly, or you can buy an annual pass. So that's cheaper, obviously, the longer you buy.
Is there any waivers or anything that they, that they sign up trying to, talking about damage to the?
Yep. Once they sign up, they acknowledge it. There's a bunch of safety features that come through it that way. There'll be constant safety reminders that are pushed to them as they log in, but the initial is a waiver. Obviously, all liability is assumed by Lime Bike, and that'll be with the agreement that's with the city. It's, that's all included in there.
Yeah, the agreement has indemnity and insurance.
Talk to us a little bit about maintenance.
Lime Bike provides that.
It'll be responsible for keeping up, so they hire local staff. They'll have an operations manager locally, so when things happen to the bikes, they are notified and they fix the bike. They're responsible for taking care of them, maintaining them, replacing them. I will tell you, the tires are foam, there's no air, so you cannot get a flat tire. You run over a nail, it's going to just keep on going.
Do you, do they typically like to work with a local bike vendor?
They will, so we.
We've got a couple in our area. Or would they bring in a competitor? I mean.
Bringing in a competitor, I don't understand that question, but you're going to be Lime Bike employees. There's a lot of liability if they contract that out. So that's really a Lime Bike decision. I will tell you.
You jump at me specifically for that bike?
For maintenance, correct. Yeah.
Well, yeah, I am. I mean, I think that, I, well, I mean, we've got at least one bike shop here that does rent.
Yeah.
Bikes, you know, so, you know, there is some competition that comes with this.
Well, you will, but you also see in the industry that this piques people's interest in bikes that wouldn't have it normally, but they're just going to ride it. And then they decide, I want a nicer, better bike, and they go into that bike shop and buy a bike. They've done a really great job with partnering with those, like, local bike companies also through, like, helmet awareness, because they don't supply helmets. It's not a state law, but where can I go get them? To go to that, like, local bike shop where you can get properly sized, properly, you know, we've really tried to integrate them in the process and not let it be a competition because it's very different. But it does, you'll see the bicycle industry, like what you're talking about, bike shop, increase.
Should increase. Bicycle should absolutely increase.
Yes. It really increased their interest, and Birmingham has seen that. And the councilman we met with last night could speak to that. He has seen, I mean, he's in that bicycle community, and he agreed that the bike shops around town have increased the business.
We provided some quotes from bike shop owners, actually, in other markets that saw increases in their bike sales once Bike Share launched, and talked about how it was a collaborative effort and should not be something that should be viewed as, we're just getting more people on bikes, right? And that's increasing your bikeability, your livability, all of that in the community. And, but to answer your question, just so I can be very clear about that from the maintenance standpoint, I mean, that's Lime Bike's decision if they want to partner locally or hire their own. Likely, they will hire their own staff because there's a lot of liability. The more people that touch this bike, if something happens, if, you don't actually want it to be on your small business owner. You want it to be on more of a national company that can fight that fight if they need to. And the more hands that touch this that aren't connected to Lime Bike, the greater liability is on the local guy.
So, so no docking station?
Correct.
So do you just rent it and drive it to your front door and leave it to your homeowner?
Absolutely.
Yep. So there's a rideaway.
You just can't take it in your house and it's stolen.
Correct. Yep. There's some rideaway restrictions within the agreement. Yes, so there's some rideaway restrictions within that agreement.
I heard that's.
There's preferred parking areas.
That's the one all around town.
It's not stolen at that point.
Because your neighbor essentially could go right, it's free game, so it's not your bike. So your neighbor comes out and pulls up the app and is like, oh, there's one right there at someone's house. And they go unlock it, hop on it, and take it to where they need to go.
Ultimate convenience for your origin and destination. There's some rideaway restrictions, there's some parking education that obviously will be conducted through this process.
They're not allowed on that bike. They're going to be.
That's why this is where the cars are going to go, for smart cars, they're going in the urban system.
Yeah, autonomous vehicles.
Have you seen the manless cars yet? The lot, the driverless cars?
Yeah, that'd be a fun experience.
Okay, let's, let's, let's stay here. Any, any, any additional discussion or questions from this presentation?
Thank you.
Sure, thanks.
Thank you all very much.
Nice room, sir.
You can leave that one out front.
We've also, the, um, the goal is to launch around April, so it's very, very quick.
Right.
Yes, that's the goal. We've got a couple things to work on.
So that means, so they're, you said they're hiring some other people to come in, that means they have to have a location? They need a location, they need a.
Work very quickly.
You know we got, you know we got a.
Okay.
You got, need a.
We'll have awareness.
Or they have awareness. We've got reinitiation to.
They're very good, relatively, they're.
Thank you.
You know, I've, I've done a letter, and there's already one agreement here, but there's.
Thank you.
MOU, is everybody okay with letting that go forward?
Yeah, there was an update in MOU.
Yeah, yeah.
I played with language change additions on that.
Oh, yeah, I don't know how to get out. You can go out that way. See, I'm trying to get out of it.
Well, I was, thought y'all were talking about the MOU. Did you need, did you have a question?
No, we're just having you go forward to the next.
Thank you, bud.
Okay, let's, let's move on into item seven, which is the ambulance service ordinance. Corey, is, Mr. Rhodes going to?
Yeah. Well, well, so this is the, the third work session where we have discussed or discussing the ambulance service ordinance. Councilman Reddick had asked for some information and, as well as Councilman Little. I've sent an email out to everyone with a timeline and some additional information from Chief Collins.
We'll do some of that.
Those last two weeks, is the?
Possibly.
Yes. So, you know, we're, we're here, we, we have the ordinance that we presented, and we provided information.
Any changes to this ordinance from before?
No, not yet. I mean, because I think that was a consensus from everyone. So, you know, Chief Collins is here, Jay Rhodes is here to help answer any, any additional questions that may be presented.
Okay. Well, are there any additional issues? Because I know David, you specifically.
Yes, okay. I'm, I apologize. I got my tray. I gotta go back over there.
So we can respond to this table.
Y'all just want to take this back up Tuesday, two weeks from now?
Sure, but I haven't had time to look through. Was, was David's stuff put in there? I looked at it.
I'm looking at the email.
The ordinance has not changed.
I have not.
It hasn't made changes.
Just the information requested has been provided.
Yeah. Now, you sent me something about the Oxford, when they, when they changed to, under the city, under the city, was there something that Kent, that Kent meet, meet with the attorneys or something? You got some information about Oxford Ambulance Service or something of that nature?
I think, I think the information he developed about, I think there was a question as to whether Oxford EMS was.
The House.
Yeah, was the City of Oxford, or, or if there was an instrumentality, the City of Oxford, in what way was it instrumentality? And I think we've ultimately concluded that it's funded in part from Oxford General Funds, correct? But it is not, I think it's a. It's not, it's not a department of the City of Oxford, I think, or Jay's here.
That's our understanding.
Okay.
As best we can determine.
Okay.
Is it, is there anything, what, what the attorney know that we don't know that maybe in here, not in here? Is anything the attorney knows that, that considers attorney-client privilege and that nature?
So you, Jay Rhodes?
Is it you, Jay Rhodes?
Yes. Asking your question.
Kent Davis, what do you know that we don't know that you and Kent may have gone over that maybe consider attorney-client privilege and you're not necessarily sharing it with the Jay? Or is there anything that may not be?
Well, I, I think it'd be helpful to explain sort of what we've done up to this point, how we got here. And if I don't answer your question, I apologize in advance, but the way all this came about was Corey and Chief Collins and myself, we got together and devised a strategy for how to deal with issues that were being raised. And as part of that, we met with all the stakeholders who would have an interest in this, including the current certificate of need holder, Anderson EMS. We've met Mr. Warren, but we also met with representatives from hospitals, the nursing homes, the Alice Centers, to get their input on how to best update our ordinance to address get their input on how to best update our ordinance to address the concerns that the chief has, to address the concerns that Mr. Warren has, and that's what produced the ordinance that you currently have. As far as anything that I know that you don't know, I mean, I know what's been said in those discussions with the stakeholders, that would not be, they're not protected by attorney-client privilege on that front.
You, you, you specialize in drafting these type of ordinance?
I've been helping draft ordinances for, I think about five years.
And you specialize in this type of ordinance, not just ordinance in general, but ambulance and, and things of that nature?
How would I specialize in ambulance ordinances?
What sticks out that we hired you, the city hired you to do this?
Mr. Downey, the city attorney, asked me to assist him with this.
He's been helping me on city stuff for five years now. So, he works in my office and helps me.
And who pays? City?
The city pays, I bill, he's part, I bill his time and I bill to the city.
But we don't get like double charged?
Well, like, like I said before, I, I make it clear again, I don't understand how the problem with it, but the problem we're gonna have is, as I stated before, you hired the city attorney. Any outside legal counsel come through, this counsel, I know that he was on before we got on here, but I'm telling you now, if the city has to hire outsider legal counsel according to the act, right, that comes through the council. I mean, we can't flip a coin and somebody go out and, and the attorney go hire someone unless he hires him at his price. Well, I, I'm not gonna say that, because I don't know exactly, we gotta, we need to discuss this attorney, this ordinance, with the new city managers that are coming in here, we need, we need, we need to get a little mix of, like President Nixon said, we need to make some stuff perfectly clear.
Well, there, there is an AG's opinion from ninety-six that, that speaks to the city manager hiring the city attorney, and, you know, we, we can look at that, but, I mean, I can say, I mean, I, I don't hire either one of them, but I mean, I've, I've been perfectly satisfied with both Jay's work and Bruce's work, I, I think they've done a great job for a number of city managers now.
So, satisfaction is not it, satisfaction is not it, 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 it's about, it's about getting out of the, the realm of things and you serve in the council, you know, I'm not giving up my authority on what I have the authority to do, while I have the authority to do. So, you can do the best job you can, but I wanna know there's some black attorneys out there, Hispanic attorney, whatever, and, and so as things going on, I wanna ensure that the, the representation of equal opportunity, equal, equal employment also presents itself, and not just some, he's going to you because you're his friend and, and things that nature, that's fine and damn it, but, uh, we have, there's some other attorneys out there that I don't know, if the council has an opportunity to hire attorneys, then we're gonna look for some people.
Well, and I, I know you've had this, like, with item ten A, the ninety-six AG's opinion just addressed the issue, I think, of the city manager hiring the city attorney.
So, you're saying there's been no other opinion since ninety-six, up until, two years old is the most recent?
Well, yeah, I mean, the, the specific question there was who hires the city, like, you've got in, like, ten A, you've got, like, the, probably, like, clearly, and not to jump ahead, but I mean, you know, there's the ordinance where we hired the municipal judge, obviously, and then, you know, there, there may be a question as to the city prosecutor and, and defense attorney, all I'm saying is the ninety-six opinion, correct, only addressed, who hires the city attorney?
And how or Rex Bruce?
That's correct, there's, there was a subsequent opinion as well, I don't remember the date offhand, but it would have been probably two thousand, it was, it was, it was actually addressing specifically, Senator Marsh submitted the request for an opinion to ask whether George Monk, Councilman Little, you were probably in the council at the time, to ask whether George Monk could serve as both city manager and city attorney, and in that opinion, it's also, you know, acknowledges...
Right, he just couldn't be compensated.
He just couldn't be compensated for both, but they, they also acknowledged in that opinion that, that, that's the city manager's function.
Right.
To be clear, I, I have not in the past considered Mr. Rhodes to be outside additional counsel, he works in my office, has helped me as, you know, just like any other lawyer that works with, for another lawyer, but I understand you may view it differently, and I respect that, but, um, you know, if, if, if city manager wants me to handle Mr. Rhodes differently, then obviously I'll do what the city wishes and therefore...
No, I, I'm not, I'm just talking about item, seeing that, what I'm saying is, you know, we may, and again, I guess we're jumping ahead here, but with respect to the city prosecutor and defense attorney, I mean, I, I, I think that the city prosecutor is hired by the city manager, just based on the Council Manager Act and based on even that ninety-six AG's opinion, but there may be, that, all I'm saying is that specific question has not yet been answered by the attorney general.
No, I would, before you did it yourself, I would, at a minimum, get that specific opinion, I have a hard time seeing any rationale for, technically under your ordinance, is, is the city prosecutor the deputy city attorney? I have a hard time understanding how the city manager would hire the city attorney but not the deputy city attorney, but, you know, that specific question has been answered, and, and neither has been answered as the public defender.
Right.
And yes, if, if there's dispute among the council, disagreement with the council as to, you know, whether or not you have the power to do it, I would recommend an attorney general's opinion.
Yeah.
Although I, I am of the opinion that certainly with the deputy city attorney, I believe it's the city manager's function, but, um, given that, the implication would be a violation of the Council Manager Act, uh, then certainly I think we'd beheld the council to seek an attorney general's opinion on the, on those two.
Those two specific questions.
I think it's settled as the city attorney, and I think it's settled as the municipal judge, you know, in terms of being a council power.
Right.
Well, the precedent has been set, and the precedent has, that has been set by the majority of this council, when you're looking back at, at the ordinance, and the precedent is that the council is hiring prosecutor and everything, and everything else over there, over there in the municipal court, and by him, by the council doing that, then he, he fits the role as the deputy city man, uh, city attorney by doing that, but not necessarily what, because the act speaks to who the city manager hires. Now, an attorney, attorney general's opinion, while we get them, but I think that, tell you, that's an opinion that hasn't been court, and, 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 and that's an opinion.
So, sorry.
So, 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 in, in my opinion, and the precedent has been set, uh, city manager don't hire prosecutor, the last council allowed that to happen, but that's a one-time thing, that's not precedent when you go over, look through the years of what has happened.
So, your previous terms as council, would that council, the council hire the...
You'd better believe it.
So...
Yeah, I mean, from what I've been able to tell, you're right, I mean, there, you know, previous councils have indeed appointed...
So, since, if it's time to...
But so has the city manager, too, so that, that's where in the confusion lies, I think.
But if it's time to renew those contracts, and that's the way we've done it, I don't see why it would even be a challenge, I mean, it's just up to the council to agree on who we like.
We, we just, we couldn't find a resolution where Teddy Copeland was appointed by council.
Well, I tell you what, we did, now I tell you that, we did it, I was here when he got on here.
Yeah, no, I think you're disbelieving now, I think you're saying it's just not...
Yeah, we, we appointed...
Yeah, I'm not questioning that at all, I, I, I agree that, I, because I think we, that one year that I think we, I think we...
Well, y'all get it, too.
...in that capacity, and I remember Randy coming up as well, uh, because I, I just remember him being in the council's chambers, but I like the idea of let's get a, let's get an attorney general's opinion, and then let's work from that, I mean, we can decide whether or not we value that opinion, what, that's up to...
As to those two, because of the...
But those two things, I think we definitely need to ask that and, and move forward in, in a positive direction.
I like the ideal of the council making the appointment, because you're in a situation where, you know, we represent the constituency, we represent the people that vote for us, we're their representatives, so we're, we're their voice, so when, when your prosecutor is appointed by the voice of the people, then I believe the prosecutor is more cognizant to the fact that he's supposed to do what he believes the people would rather have him do, so it makes this level of accountability to the prosecutor that I think we should basically foster that experience by, by continuing to appoint.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm not opposed to the council doing it, I think we just need some clarification as to what authority we've been granted on, on those two...
Because there's nothing saying we can't do it, I, I...
Yeah, and then I said, and then I said, and then we move on. When Teddy, when Teddy Copeland initially was hired, even before we went through that scenario, I was on the council when he was initially hired, and, and, and I remember talking to, uh, Attorney, Attorney Smith, he was working in his office, and he put in a word for Teddy at the time, you know, so, and I, I have the institutional knowledge.
I believe we appointed Judge Downey at that time.
Yeah, we appointed him.
As well, I, I think it was one big, that was when Vaughn resigned as the municipal judge, and, uh, we appointed...
The judge.
The judge, but I think we also addressed, at the same time, we also addressed prosecuting and defense attorneys in that same act, because they were all in the room together.
But it, it, it is...
That's right.
Yeah, yeah, well, I mean, there, there's actually been precedent for both the city manager and council doing it, and not only that, because I looked this afternoon myself, the, this is section eight point eleven of our municipal code, and it says, "In the event of the absence from the city, deaf, disabled, or disqualified from municipal judge for any reason, the mayor of the city shall have the..." Yeah, so, I mean, I think it would be beneficial to get an AG's opinion on those two, I mean...
Was that for an acting municipal judge?
Yeah.
That's per, per state law.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's consistent with state law, and the judge, and that's only, I think it's like a thirty days, thirty, sixty days, and then there's gotta be a replacement.
But I don't think there's any question that the city manager hires the city attorney, there's no question that the city council hires the municipal court, I think those are beyond dispute, but the other two, I think is kinda gray, I mean, even though I do think that the city manager also would hire the prosecutor in that he is the assistant city attorney, that question has not been specifically addressed, so I mean, I'm, I'm not opposed to getting an AG's opinion on that and the defense counsel.
Wish I would've done as much research whenever we had a question.
Let's, 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 let's get it off, you know, there's, I, I'm getting several complaints about things, and like I said, with my boss mad, I'm mad.
Can I interject one thing?
Yeah.
If, if that's, if it's the council's desire to make the city prosecutor appointment, then I think so long as your current code characterizes that position as deputy city attorney, I believe you're not likely to get an opinion from the attorney general's office that says that you should treat the deputy differently than the attorney.
Because that would make no sense.
It would just be, not make a lot of sense, however, that ordinance exists by the discretion of the council.
Right.
And so, follow what I'm saying, is if it's the collective will of the council to position itself to make the appointment of the city prosecutor, or to have, you know, for the attorney general to be more likely to find that it's within your powers, then I would recommend repealing the deputy city attorney ordinance provision, either, I would probably do it before submitting the attorney general's request, because you're looking at a three-month turnaround on the shortest end, this is a pretty simple issue, I don't imagine they'd get bogged, too bogged down on it, but they still understand their understaffed, and, I mean, three, six month turnaround, so I would recommend doing that before you file for the attorney general opinion, if the desire is to, to, for the, to enhance the likelihood that the attorney general opine that it is a council power.
If that desire exists, can they do the ordinance, repeal the ordinance next council meeting, and then at the same meeting do a resolution requesting, I know they would have to suspend the...
I think, I think as long as we can represent, I think, as long as you could represent in the opinion to the attorney general that it is or is being repealed.
I think we're discussing it right now in the work session, I don't see why it would matter if we vote forward next.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not opposed to the council doing that, I think, I think Bruce's advice is good, that we have to do that.
I don't think the ordinance necessarily has to be repealed before the request is made, but I think it has to, if it's gonna be repealed and represented, that it's gonna be appealed, it has to be done so before they issue an answer properly, which, again, is on the shortest end, a three-month turnaround.
Well, I mean, I think, I think it's getting by, so if you wanna do that, then that's what...
Okay. So, we're repealing the, so we need a, I guess, an ordinance to repeal that section, and then the resolution for the AG's?
Yeah, for the sixth.
For the sixth. Okay, uh, so, what's that?
If, if that's being taken... This is... I didn't hear back from Myra, Myra's, I haven't heard back. You said you responded to Dan's request.
Well, I think your, your request was to include all these things in the ordinance, but, and I think that circulated that.
I got, I got an email, Mr. Wilson comes up to me.
Well, let's just say, let's say these next two weeks is studied out, and then we'll be prepared for a more thorough going discussion on the sixth. Okay, item eight, you know, I think we still need to meet with the school board, but, but we, we gotta, if y'all will submit some dates to Myra for your availability, so that we can, you know, kinda give some days to the school board about that.
I just came to meet east of Sunday.
All right.
Okay, um, all right, Ms. Ray, we are at item nine, what is your discussion on?
Anybody have a problem with us, way, this is a fundraiser, college tuition?
Legacy club doesn't outscoring the job, I'm very, very impressed with what I did.
So, we can put that on the consent agenda for the sixth. Okay, Ms. Little, we are, did we discuss your...
Yeah.
Well, you, you got I and C, too.
Oh, yeah, I had a B.
Okay.
I, I, I put that on the council meeting, I, I put this on it before, as a discussion, you know, we, we, we gotta have better cooperation and say it's her, and answering some, some legal questions that we will submit, and I submitted a legal request for the, that Jay's to answer high school, answer school system, and it's, you know, some legislative action, start legislatively and not just like local, 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 local act.
Yeah, that's what my research...
It was, because there's, there's an AG's opinion on that, that even spoke to the constitutionality of that legislation, I think.
And we, and Bruce...
You talking about the ninety-six legislation?
We provided...
The local act that created the board and...
No, not, not, not the, not the two values, not the elected...
The original inception of, the original creation of Anstacy Schools, my research showed that it was a state legislative act that created it, it's one of three districts, I believe, in the state that were created at the state level, as opposed to a local creation of a district, which is more than normal.
So, we're talking about like late eighteen hundreds, early nineteen...
Nineteen thirteen, nineteen oh three, I don't know why that number sticks in my head, but somewhere in that timeframe.
I have a, I have a pretty, pretty liberal access to Westlaw, which is what most lawyers, they go Lexis Nexis or Westlaw use for legal research, I can't find anything in Westlaw that goes back that far now, I mean, if we were to search, do a hand search, like, you know, page by page search of whatever old codes that are available in the state archives, talking about a labor-intensive, expensive process, we might be able to identify it, but...
Why is it important?
I would look at some labels in that and just see, give anything applicable that's maybe, that's maybe overlooked.
Can we ask, like, Legislative Reference Service to pull that up, it's a state document?
Senator Marsh could probably ask them out, you know.
Because I, and I looked on the Secretary of State's website as well for, you know, that part that's got uncodified legislative acts, I couldn't find anything on there either.
We would have to search archives.
I could be wrong, I mean, I would be the first one, not even today, but...
And I did, I wasn't aware that...
But it would take that, though, you're, I mean, Brian, you'd have to go down there...
I think you'd have to search the archives, starting with the code of eighteen, whatever.
I gotta meet tomorrow, I have some school system, do they have something?
Okay.
I'll see what they have, and I get back.
That was my suggestion at the outset, given that, I'm, sorry.
See, uh, see what they have, and, uh, then, uh, go from there.
Campbell may have, Jim Campbell may have.
Yeah, we'll get something, you know, but, uh, like I said, we, we, we gotta get better response from, uh, legal services, uh, and not, you know, we, we gotta file something, get, get us some, uh, some, some legal representation.
When I asked for that, really precedent for board appointments, and nobody could find it for me, and I googled it on, on my laptop.
Counselor Ray, that's not fair, probably that's fair, you didn't find, you found something that didn't stand for the proposition you said.
That's what I was looking for, that's what I was asking for.
Well, when I reviewed what you found, I did, it was my opinion that it was not, did not stand for the proposition you were suggesting, and that I had...
Exactly, that's what I was asking for.
Okay.
I mean, again, well, I, I, I think, I mean, me personally, I think Bruce does a great job, I mean, I really did.
I'm very, very pleased when Todd at Bruce does.
I'm not saying Bruce is incompetent, I'm just saying it's hard to get...
He'd be staying in your son's house.
Well, what does Andy have to do?
I will never back him to, to help you if you, if you ask me for it, it's like, I feel like I always have done that, but I'll make it a priority.
All right, well, let's, let's, let's move on then.
All right.
You, you got...
Board appointment.
Yeah, you got ten C, yeah.
Brad Brack at the board, and, uh, the Anstley Museum of Natural History, he's retired, he retired railroad engineer, and, uh, he's been around community for a while.
Does everybody can see on that?
There won't be any, but, I mean, I...
I got one, I got one, uh, Ula Tappel, what was it, Ula Tappel?
Yeah.
Somebody, uh, uh, Hugh, Mr. Houston, Ralph Houston, I have an appointment, because I couldn't find anything, we couldn't find anything, someone to replace Ralph Houston.
He's still on there.
Right, he's can't serve on two boards.
What's the other board?
What's the other one, sir?
The school board, that's...
That's not a city, that's not a city manager, I mean, I, I'll be supportive, you want, they, they just, you just gotta make sure it's fake.
You have Emily Duncan and...
And, uh, and listen, uh, who, who replaced, uh, Ula Tappel?
Emily Duncan.
Emily Duncan.
That was like...
Emily Duncan, Emily Duncan, where's, who, the girl from, uh, Nesbit Lake Road, y'all, we have to get somebody at Nesbit Lake Road, who's that, which one?
The ones that say, the ones that say little.
Yeah, you gonna see that, you gonna see that, but, uh, but anyhow, that's, Emily is Nesbit Lake, okay, uh, anyhow, uh, Mr. Brack is my next appointment to the board, Lord said the same, we still around and the creek don't rap.
And Mick, well, you have an appointment, I'm trying to pull up the board position today, just...
I've got one that's expired, but my intention is to reappoint her, set that after confirming that she would like to stay. I want to keep them on. Museum pass, standing...
I mean, I'm not opposed to whoever Ms. Little wants, I mean, so long as it...
No, I mean, because it's not my case of...
Yeah, yeah.
You gotta vacate it.
And, and, and I don't know how, how legal this is, but I tell you right now, I'm gonna try and get it in, I'm just trying to put out some other fire, now, but everybody who don't live in Water Three, I wanna wipe off the board of Water Three, I want off the board of Water Three, and I wanna see the ordinance that created, what was created, that we jumped from Maine to Spain, get some, uh, again, that, 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 that is, uh...
I think that, too, would require me making the ordinance, because then, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, but anyhow, yeah, it's been, it's all been, but anyhow, I would, I, I, I need it to happen, you know, but anyway, we'll deal with that as it, as it, as it may, as it pops up.
Okay, it's, okay, smile clock, we've got Ms. Harris. Okay, it's, okay, it's five o'clock, and we've got Ms. Harris, her items, and then updates from the city manager. Then we need to really quickly go through the agenda for tonight.
Okay, I'm gonna be real quick about this. We, in two thousand thirteen, introduced an anti-tethering ordinance in Aniston, and I withdrew it because we had some people saying that, that it was too restrictive to say you just cannot chain dogs, you know, at all. But then, now, I'm, over the cold in particular, I was getting phone calls almost every day of people who ride by, saw these animals out in the cold in twenty-degree weather, and it is very, very traumatic for a lot of people who really care. And so, rather than, and there are people who have, they might have a dog outside during the day, they bring it in at night. What I'm against is twenty-four-seven chaining them. Don't get one if you're gonna treat it like that. But I, I realize how the enforcement is an issue. So, what we're looking at now with this committee, and you'll, you'll see it later, is possibly, say, after a certain degree, like, if it gets below a certain temperature, they're, they're not allowed to be chained outside, period. And that's happening, and you'll find in New Orleans, you'll find in.
Was I on that committee?
What?
Was I on that committee?
We have had a group of people meeting on a regular basis.
We were supposed to have a committee, me and you and some more people.
And Jake Cunningham, maybe.
And I never got an email or anything saying we was having a committee meeting.
Well, we haven't been met for a long time, but we just recently had one. We had a room full of people in here. I'm sorry, I did not know that you were interested. I don't remember being involved in that, but.
That's when, um, Ken Davis was here, remember, we talked about it in this room, about a committee.
Okay.
When you, when the ladies that's running the dog shelter was here as well, and we talked about that.
I just don't know if we did anything formally, but I, I can put something out formally on that, and appoint a committee, or set a committee.
Because I'm, because I'm for education as well. It's, it's one thing to say to create a tethering law, but I think if we do a strong education platform to educate people on how to handle the situation, it'll be more receptive.
Okay.
And, because we had a situation not long ago where a, I think, fourteen-year-old kid got hit by a car running away from a stray dog, because, and it was a dog that people had called the police on roaming the neighborhood, but we didn't have anywhere to pick it up, because the shelter wouldn't take the dog. So, we had a child get hit by a car, get messed up pretty bad because of a stray dog that we didn't have anywhere to take. So, I, I think education will be the key. If we do a strong education system and train the people, I think it would be a great idea.
Our subsequent meetings, I'll include you in that. Thank you. Also, Van, during the budget hearing, we talked about, we need to have a council travel policy. And we haven't, haven't seen one yet, and I think that's pretty important. Councils all over the United States, I did a lot of research on it this weekend, they are under a lot of scrutiny for use of taxpayer dollars. As far as, we have to be accountable, it's not our money. And so, I think we need to really, really have a policy in place, and so I'd like to see that happen. And so, I'm bringing it back up again.
I will have something at the workshop. I circulated something a while back, but.
Something plus in the workshop?
Yeah.
You know, yeah, I don't, I'll tell you something else. I'll tell you this now, you know, council needs to travel. Sit home right now, I don't know who's going to Washington in March, but there's a big budget battle. And it's a shame that the other cities and other council members and mayor, who are in Washington, D.C., that will be knuckling it out, legislatures and stuff, who's trying to save the municipal block grant, home funds, infrastructure funds, things of that nature, as we log in Capitol Hill and just small group discussions, as mayors and councils across this nation get there, and, and, and we're vacant. We're, we're absent. I'm planning on being there as always, and I am, and I know our council travel is cut the fine by another, but I am asking the council, I want to travel to Las Vegas for the retail meeting coming up in May also, to get some things done. I, I don't think that West Aniston, South Aniston has been adequately represented in getting some things to the city. And, 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 and we have to step our game up. All I'm saying is, we, we need to travel, we need to travel. And, 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 and that's why, and that's why I don't want to brag, but it is what it is. I am so knowledgeable.
And I've seen, and, and I've seen the difference between the cities that do participate in, in going out to these events and the training and everything, and these are the more progressive cities. And then I look at the cities that do have these real stringent travel ordinances and things like that, and also you're less progressive cities, you're smaller cities, the cities that aren't growing at the capacity they have the potential to. So, you know, it's a balance. At what point do we give up the potential for growth and grants and, and aid and everything else? So, we, you know, at what point are we, you know, we're trying to be available to our constituents, but at what point are we doing them an injustice by not going out and getting education and training?
You have some very good points, but Mike Rogers' office is right here in Aniston. Anybody can get an appointment. You can walk in his office and meet with him. You don't have to go to D.C. and walk in his office there. You can meet with him here. Also, on Wednesday, Senator Shelby is going to be here in Aniston. So, there are things that we can do as a council that will not cost the taxpayers so much money.
What? They'll be doing grant writing seminars and things, what's available.
No, I'm saying that, that trip, there's a lot of lobbying that goes on that could happen here in the state as well, and saving the money.
I would, I would say that, you know, I'm not going on the Washington trip because I have other commitments, but I have had some positive successes from the Washington trips. One in particular is the development of the Rocky Island Network Association. The whole genesis of that came from, from my first trip up there. There are, there is some value in some of that. There is some waste in some of that, too. And I think we can all agree, we've all sat through a seminar that we thought, why am I in this room?
Just see what we're doing all right.
Well, I don't, I don't need, I don't need somebody to tell me what I'm doing something wrong. But, but we do have a budget that we've got to adhere to. And we voted on it, and we agreed to a budget, and I think, I think it's incumbent upon us in, uh, to adhere to the budget that we presented to the taxpayers that we said we were gonna match. Uh, now, that may alter our travel a little bit as a result of it. It does, it does. I'm, you know, I accepted that reality when I voted for the budget, that I may not get to do some of the things that I've done in the past that have been important, what I thought was important for the city. So, you know, it, it is what it is. We, we've got a budget, we gotta work to it.
We got a budget, we could do, and, and we have education and things, and knowledge, and institutional, I think the council has the, uh.
A lot of the progress we made in this city has been because of training we took away.
You cannot sit in council, in Congressman Rogers' office, we, in fact, in D.C., we will meet with, there are a lot of things that benefit of sitting around and talking with other council members. And for the liking, I can't understand, when you go into these meetings and you hear what the environment of the mayor, the council, and their communities are doing different things, and the project that they're doing, the problem that we have, we can go to these meetings and come back, and this falls dead on arrival. If we would institute some things that we learn from these meetings, then you see a great difference that takes place. But the problem that takes place is, in the budgeting process, Ward Two, Ward Three, West Aniston, South Aniston, don't get the budget, don't get the attention that financially that we have. And, and, and as I, I stated before, as a black community, you know, the topic, the plan has not been done in business in, in Ward Two, I mean, in West Aniston, South Aniston, you know, nothing, you know. And we need, and because our fight and our voices will not bear at the table. And, and so, in the white community, you, the Chamber of Commerce, basically, white, doing a lot of stuff and, and, and pushing certain things up and down Noble Street, I mean, I'm not talking racial stuff, I'm just talking it is what it is. We haven't had a new build, business building built in West Aniston since Coon went on strike. And, and, and down in South Aniston. And, and, and we have, I'm talking with the development now, trying to do something in Aniston, uh, and building stuff, building things. So, the white community can prosper if you all don't travel, because you have other people that are commit, uh, that are lobbying for your areas. But in West and South Aniston, Council Reddick, we're it. And so, all we, all, all I'm asking is, you know, and, and I think, we've talked about it before, and I think we can restore that, I mean, I, I think I'm okay on, on my travel anyhow. But, and, and, but I do need to go to the, to that retail business in, in, in Vegas and, and my Black Caucus meeting. I'm not going to the state league meeting, but the Black Caucus meeting in July. You know, those things that, that, that some things that are unique to us and our community, that we sort of discuss the things, and I would invite you all to sort of go to. And, and I do think it's, it's incumbent and very prevalent upon us, important to us, that we do get our youth involved, where they can travel to some of these meetings, to talk about budget. If we're going to educate our, our youth to run this city mutually, mutualistically, then they need to be at those meetings and seeing what's going on, so when they get into these positions, they won't be totally be and totally die, totally don't.
Okay, let's, let's, let's do this. Since it's five eleven, now, before we get to your city manager updates. I don't think it's the city manager updates first. Um, did anybody get the email I sent about the proposed contract with Jay Johnson? Did everybody give of that?
Yeah.
But I, I, I got, I'm trying to dissolve. Do you want to go right now?
Well, I mean, I, I know we need to move on it, but I, I mean, if, if y'all want more time to look at it, we could do a special call meeting. I mean, I, I would.
I want, I want to discuss, I don't necessarily have a big problem with it. I just had, really, and to be honest, I just picked it up.
Okay.
And yeah, looking at it, when did you, when did you send it now?
Late, it was late.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I read it at lunch.
Yeah, I, I.
It's pretty short.
Yeah, I, I, I see it, you know, but that, that, that really.
When y'all want to have. Can, can we do, can we have a special call meeting later on this week?
Yeah.
So, that we can, uh.
Yeah, I mean, I, I.
It's four in the morning.
Yeah, yeah, I'm trying to dissolve.
She's got me in bed by then Thursday morning.
Okay.
Okay.
You have to get her in, I'm sorry.
Thursday morning, and then I still got, you know, commitment every afternoon.
What about, uh, Friday?
Friday, I'm okay.
Y'all want to try to Friday morning?
As long as it's before three.
I can't do it Friday morning. I'm committed to, and I'm.
Oh, okay.
As long as it's four, three. It only takes five minutes.
Yeah, I really will.
You know. Twelve o'clock. I mean, it, it doesn't matter to me. I'll be, I'm in town Friday. Yeah.
Friday, what? You mean that one?
Yeah, it won't take any time. It's five by noon.
Yeah, let's see.
What time?
Twelve o'clock.
Is that enough notice?
You say twenty-four hours.
Twenty-four hours.
And that here by time, to thoroughly go over the contract. And that's my fault for not sending you down till this morning. Okay. All right, Corey, let's go to your.
Yeah, just real quick, Chamber of Commerce. Chamber of Commerce is holding two candidate forums, one on April twenty-third for the County Board of Education, and one on April twenty-sixth for the County Commissioner Forum. They have asked, they want to have it at the City Meeting Center, and they've asked, since we are part of the term, for members of the chambers, if we would be willing to waive the fee for both days. I told them I would, I would ask y'all tonight, but we won't be able to vote on it until March sixth.
I, for one, think we should do that. I mean, I, I think we've got a good relationship with the chamber.
I appreciate it. The twenty-third and twenty-sixth.
Yeah, I don't.
What is that?
County Commission.
One is the County Board of Ed, and then the, one on the twenty-sixth is the County Commissioner Forum.
Oh, they, 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 they.
So, we can go back.
They, they, they have a campaign for it. They can pay. I'm just joking.
I just want to go back to the.
This, this one could be entertaining.
Yeah.
All right, and then the other thing, Councilman Reddick did ask when we were doing our ride along to West Aniston, there are two red lights, traffic lights. Do you know the address?
Fifteenth and Cooper and Fourteenth and Cow.
All right. I'm gonna work with public works unless anybody has any objections, and we get that process going and find out what we have to do to get that.
Remove them. Two-way stop, so fifteen and Cooper, and four-way stop on fifteen and Cow, Fourteenth and Cow.
So, and I'll get the police and public works and see, make sure everything's good.
Okay.
Just, that will be coming up on the.
Yeah, okay. Anything else? Okay, let's, let's go through, let's, first, we'll stand in a German for the work session. Quickly go through the agenda for tonight. Ben's got the invocation and pledge. Are there any additions to, or deletions to the agenda tonight?
Okay. I'm gonna read the proclamation for World Spade Day, which was prompted by Councilmember Harris, and read the proclamation for Arbor Week, which was prompted by Mr. Folks. Credit them for that. The follow-up public comments, we've got a confirmation hearing for Brett Rothwell.
He's here.
Who is here. I saw him there to go, the Anstoria Works and Sewer Board. Uh, I've got the consent agenda, and then the only ordinance we're taking up tonight would be, the Animal Control Officer, correct, okay. How lengthy is that?
If we can read it by five o'clock.
Is there, is there an objection to reading that by title only? The, uh. Yeah, it, it is kind of lengthy. Yeah, so is there an objection to reading that by five o'clock?
I don't know.
Is this on its post-reading?
Yes, last week, uh, he's here. Are you doing this, are you coming for a project?
Uh, yes, I'm job shadowing.
Okay, very good. So, if y'all want to take time, say hi to him.
Okay.
All right, let's stand in the German till five thirty.